Honoring me, to my far left is Councilwoman Wykoff, Councilmember Juan, Councilmember Hillis as well. And we have others joining us. Like to officially call us to order, make a motion to adopt the agenda. Motion has been made in second, please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, four yeas, zero nays, the agenda has been adopted.
Most to approve the minutes? Most of them have been made in second by one council member. Open the vote.
The vote is open. Vote is closed, four yeas, zero nays, the minutes have been approved.
Thank you, that takes us to public comment. Just mind you, you have three minutes as you approach the mic. Please keep your comments directed toward the committee and stay cordial. Okay. Mr. Givens, you're actually our appointee. So you will have a minute to say a couple of words with something that you want to speak on other than your appointment. You can at this time, or like I say, you will have time during your appointment to do that. Okay? The next on our list would be, uh, Ladon Blackett. And we've been joined by my other colleague, Councilmember Dozier, and our Vice Chair, Councilwoman Overstreet.
Good morning, Council. Just last week, I had an opportunity to come and say I won't be before you often, and I'm right back again right before the Turkey Day. I am coming to bring to your attention, as I mentioned in my previous appearance before you all, that, no surprise tactics, I want you all to know. Earlier this year, I initiated-
Could you tell us who you are?
Oh, I'm sorry. Hello, good morning. My name is Ladon Blackett. I am your interim Inspector General. I am here in regard to Resolution 25R4282. That is to be heard today. A couple of months ago, I came before you all and expressed a new process that we are going through related to our Ipro reports. As you know, the Office of the Inspector General has oversight over the entire procurement process. And one of the things that we're doing to better serve the citizens of Atlanta and serve you all as council is making sure that we do pre and post award reviews. Those post award reviews will start with those matters in which we find high risk during our Ipro review process. Well, this particular Resolution 25R4282 actually did not complete the Ipro process when it first came through this body. The Ipro report was not completed. We were still in the process of moving things along in our normal timely schedule. It was not delayed. But the council did elect to go ahead and make a vote on that particular legislation and move forward a project of about 1.5 million. It sounded like it was very urgent and important, but it did not have an Ipro report. With this new resolution that is coming before this body, amends that from 1.5 to 10 million. It also includes an amendment to the parties that will be the vendors related to this. I believe that it was stated that there was some type of error in the process. Again, this came before the Ipro report was complete. So we weren't, we did not even have an opportunity to opine on that error. So I wanted to make sure I let the council know that both this project and a corresponding project will have an integrity risk review. What is that? Nothing to be alarmed about. I know the name sounds scary. But what that means is we will be continuously checking on the backend post award that everybody is doing what they're supposed to do, that they are being fair, that all of the parties are paying what they're supposed to pay and getting paid what they're supposed to pay. I always like that to be on the record. Because this did not go through an original Ipro review, I didn't get a chance to do it then, but look at this. It had to have this amendment from 1.5 million to 10 million. So I am now able to place on the record that both of these procurements and the awards will be going through that process. And I will ask this council respectfully that as we go forward, when you see that there is not an Ipro report included, that this council follow the requirement of the charter and not move forward on it. I know our projects are important, they are timely, and I'm going to make sure my team does what we're supposed to do to get it done timely. But I also want to make sure that you all have the information you need. Thank you very much for your attention in this matter.
That actually brings us to the end of our public comment section. And Councilwoman Overstreet.
I would like to get a printed copy of the amendment that we were just informed about. Is that the full scope? Is that everything? All participants, every, everything is in there? 4282, I don't see it. I'm talking about in our amendment packet. Right, I, I want the whole thing printed out if we can, please.
End of our public safety, which brings us to our presentations. But colleagues, if you would indulge me once, before we made the presentation, we do have a member of resident that is here for a communication. So if we can take our communication so we can get him back to his normal life, and then we'll come back and do presentations, so.
This takes us to Section G Communications. Item number 125C0128, a communication from Councilmembers Jason Winston, District 1, Cardine Wykoff, District 2, Byron Amos, District 3, Jason Dozier, District 4, and Michael Julian Vaughn, Post One at Large, appointing Mr. Darren Givens to serve as a member of the City of Atlanta Americans with Disabilities Act Advisory Committee.
I think we have Mr. Givens with us. Sir, if you could just approach, give us your name and tell us why you would like to do this incredible work.
Thank you. I'm really interested in making sure that we follow through on making all of our sidewalks in the city ADA compliant. It's important to me personally because I can't drive or ride a bike, and so I rely heavily on sidewalks myself. And I've attended several of the meetings so far just as a guest, and I'm optimistic about the ability of this committee to do really good work for the city.
Thank you, sir, Councilmember Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Darren, good to see you as always. I just want to say thank you so much for your commitment to ensuring that every pedestrian in the City of Atlanta has a safe passage through our city and being one of the premier voices on this issue over the last decade. I do want to let you know that as only committee today, we passed legislation that prohibits the use of razor wire, concertina wire, barbed wire, along public rights away, jokingly dubbed it the Darren Givens Act. And we're looking forward to adopting it full, council. But just want to say thank you for your advocacy and move approval.
Thank you.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second? Motion has been made in second by, I see, Councilwoman Wykoff.
Thanks, Darren. I look forward to working with you on the commission starting in the new year when I'm finished my council duties. Thanks.
Thank you. With that being said, motion has been made in second, please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays, this item is favorable.
Thank you, sir, thank you very much. Sad for being in touch about the next steps. We also been joined by my colleague, Councilmember Lewis as well. So that takes us back up to our presentations. First, I see we have a handout by the Atlanta Region Commission that should have been emailed to everyone. So I make a motion to a self and file on that presentation. No, don't have to do that, okay? So that presentation is done, you should have it. So next, we have our quarterly briefing from our wonderful airport.
Good morning. Morning. I'm Ricky Smith for the record, general manager of the Department of Aviation, which includes the, which includes the Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport. Thank you. So it's good to be back to present the quarterly update for the Department of Aviation. It seems like a year ago when I spoke last, but I was about three months ago. So again, Chairman Amos, members of the committee, thank you for this opportunity to speak. Lance of the agenda that I will go through. Hope you also recognize that the stack for this quarter is half the size of the PowerPoint stack I presented during the last quarter. And the presentation should be half as long. So I will start out however, giving some highlights on the airport over the last three months. And so back in September, September 19th, we celebrated the Phase Two opening of our concourse D widening project. This was a significant mark in what is an eight-phase project that will introduce additional gates, expanded concourses, larger restrooms, more concessions. And we're excited to be able to, to continue this project successfully. This particular phase introduces five additional gates to the concourse. This is our narrowest concourse, which is 60 feet, and this project expands it to 99 feet and will add an additional 300 feet and less to the concourse. Much needed space for the concourse. Can't see all the pictures on this slide, but we also, on the following day, September 20th, we hosted the Mayor's 5K on the 5th runway, which was a very fun project, also a project that was beneficial to our community. We had over 2,200 registrants for the project, for the event, which raised over $370,000. Those funds will go to the Mayor's Scholarship Program and United Way of Greater Atlanta College Fund Program. Again, a fun project and a good benefit to the community. Not all of the pictures are slowing up, showing up on the slide, so I'll still try to work through it. The August, August of this, this year, we also hosted our Summer Community Hiring Event. Over 22 employers participated in the event. We had over 2,000 attendees, and we're very excited that over 800 contingent offers were made to those attendees who were looking for employment. So over the last several months, we spent a considerable amount of time focusing on, on the people, the employees of the Department of Aviation. You may recall during one of my previous presentations, I talked about the number of people that I talked to to get a feel for what was working and where there were opportunities to improve. And there were a number of themes, but the basic theme that came out of those, those visits was one, Department of Aviation is talent-rich, meaning it has enormous talent. I would compare it, I would put it up against any other aviation system in the country where there are opportunities to improve our systems. There are system deficiencies. And one of those deficiencies was the need for a strategic plan. And so we just completed Phase One of our strategic plan, which is what we're calling the Executive Strategic Plan. That is at the Deputy General Manager level. That plan introduced a refreshed mission, a refreshed vision, a set of core values, enterprise goals, and key performance indicators. What I'm most proud of with this particular effort is not the document that's basically, that's normally the prize from an event like this, it's the journey. And a part of this journey, we decided to pull together a group of employees that represent a cross-section of the organization to develop the values for the organization. And so this wasn't General Manager Smith or any of the DGMs going into a room and determining what the values of the organization should be. We relied on our employees, and they did an amazing job pulling together the values. As you can see up on the slide, that's a picture of the team that pulled it together. Another part of this focus on employees is what we're calling the Airport Collective Engagement Initiative. So part of the feedback that we got also was that employees wanted to feel more connected to what was going on, they wanted more communications with them, and they wanted to communicate more to the leadership. And so ACE is what we're calling it, is a series of strategies that aim to do just that. Two times a year, we have a forum for all employees where they get an update on what's going on and they get to ask questions, whatever's on their mind. We have business coordinating, take, business coordination meetings twice a month where employees can hear the priorities in the organization. They get to provide feedback, influence what they're, what's going on, and they just get information. We do pulse surveys, and so it's important to always know what employees are thinking, particularly when you push out something new, something different, some kind of a change. You want to know how it's impacting the organization. And so occasionally, we will push out pulse surveys. And then I do a roadshow four times per year, just did one, where I go to a particular area of the organization, and it's both live, it's in person, and it's also broadcasted to employees that can't get to that location. And again, I give them an update on what's going on with respect to the things that they deem important and I ask questions that they might have. And then we have small group listening sessions. These are ad hoc, they're unpredictable. Whenever an employee or group of employees feel there's a need to talk about something, we make it available and we listen to them. And all of this, again, is a part of an effort to try to improve engagement across the enterprise. And this is just a chart that shows that, you know, this whole effort is, is an effort to try to create a two-way communication framework, and that should lead to higher morale and more engagement in the workforce. Continuing with people, we continue to have 1,021 employees. During the quarter, we filled 12 positions, as you can see on the chart. So we're excited about that, bringing 12 new members on to our team. So some time ago, Aviation started this, this welding apprenticeship program for our maintenance employees. And I'll just pause by saying, we cannot do enough for our maintenance employees. And so we were very excited back in July to host the first graduation from this program. We have two individuals who graduated as apprentice welders. We have two more that will be graduating next year. And so this is an example of the type of program that we will continue to grow and add. We will find other trades to develop apprenticeship programs around as well so that we can position our tradesmen, our employees, which are very difficult to recruit, by the way. But we can bring them on and train them to be the best, the best that we have. Operational metrics, so all of our key activities are on the rise. If you look at passenger levels, passenger levels are up just over 1%. Operations are up just over 2%. Cargo is down, but that's due largely to Southwest Airlines. South, Southwest Airlines declining its presence here. And so that's about a 23% drop in our cargo activity. If you look at passengers going through TSA screenings, that's up less than a percent, and our ground transportation trips are also up. And so again, all of our key metrics are showing positive. Customer service experience, we participate in the Airport Council International Airport Service Quality Program, which evaluates about 30 service areas throughout the airport. It's a worldwide program, and we participated in it annually. We get quarterly reports. For this quarter, we actually saw an up quick, an uptick, about a quarter of a point increase in our overall satisfaction score and about 2.2, 22% increase in our overall experience. And so I know the Vice Chair has been challenging us to get past 4%. We're getting closer and closer to 4%, and the team is doing a lot of great work coordinating, collaborating with our airport partners to improve in those airport service quality measures. Moving on to infrastructure, we have two projects that are, that are live and coming to closure over the next year or so. And one is the Aviation Administration Center. This will add additional office space for our employees. We will consolidate most of our employees into this facility. We're looking forward to that. It will include a new employee parking deck as well as an auditorium where we can host meetings, similar to the meetings I just talked about, our employee forums, where we can get most of our employees into one place at one time. This project is slated to be completed late next year, around the fourth quarter of next year. And again, we look forward to giving you more information on that. It's about 178,000 square feet building. The next project is our south parking deck. We're excited to have this on as well. We could use the additional 7,800 spaces that will come onboard as well as an enhancement of the red light, green light parking technology that we bring on as well, and expanding our electric vehicle charging stations. This is slated to be open June of next year, shortly before FIFA. And so again, we're excited to have this facility on, bring in new parking capacity. Moving on to technology, technology's been very busy. We, we looked at expanding or introducing the biometric air exit. This is a, a product that makes it easier for you to get through INS, immigration, if you're coming into the airport. That project is about 85% complete on concourse F, and we're looking forward to, to extending that through the rest of the other concourses in the airport. Again, this will reduce wait times for passengers boarding at our international gates. The mayor talks about the airport being not just the busiest and the most efficient, but being the most resilient. We've made a lot of headway in that respect. Our IT unit has been doing a lot of work to expand our network. And this particular project creates redundancy or resiliency in that we, in the, so that when we have a network outage, we have the redundancy to improve our business continuity and not have it affect the daily operations of, of the airport facility. Sustainability is not just a buzzword. For us, we just introduced a new, a new sustainability website where you can find our sustainability policies, plans, reports, and initiatives, as well as other yearly information that's important to that program. And it's important to note at this time that we did achieve Level Two of our Airport Carbon Accreditation Program. And so we're excited about that, that shows. But back, back two, three years ago, when we first entered this program at Level One, it shows that we're making enormous progress in that respect. We also had our first ever electric vehicle ride and drive program at the airport, and it was well-attended. We had over 130 participants in the program, and we demonstrated over 10 EVs that were available for test drives. And then certainly not last, Flint River. We're putting a lot of effort into helping people become more comfortable with the state of the Flint River. And so our employees, coupled with the number of our partners at the airport, actually did a boat ride, or a paddle ride, if you will, on the Flint River. Again, trying to develop a comfort level with the river so that people can see that it's, it's safe to, it's a safe waterway. Finance, we continue to be strong financially. As you look at this slide, you see that from a revenue standpoint, we're about 9% over our forecast, our revenue forecast or our budget, and we're about 24% under our budget, our projected budget, which is, which is pretty good position. We have about $1.1 billion in cash, that's about 979 days of cash. In terms of our debt coverage, we are over 2.5% at 2.8%. And then our cost per employment still hovers around $6.78, and that's all in cost to the airlines. And so again, by any measure from a financial standpoint, we continue to be strong. Despite being the busiest and most efficient in the world, we continue to have enormous interest in new service at the airport. We introduced two new routes during, during the quarter. One to Idiad, they offered, they, they launched service to Dubai, and American Airlines offered service to LaGuardia. We're looking forward to reporting in next quarter where we will announce 15 new routes launching during that quarter, including Delta's new service to Berlin, Germany. Looking at our non-airline revenues, nautical revenues, that continues to be strong as well. You see concessions is up 2%. And this concession, this concessions is, is not just food and retail, it's concessions and advertising. Rental cars down, parking is up 25%. Ground transportation revenues are up 2%. Those are transportation networks, Uber and Lyft and others. So we didn't talk about this the last time I presented, but we did implement a parking rate increase. As you can see, we implemented that parking rate increase back in May of this year, and it's achieved all the objectives that we wanted to achieve. And so in the past, we had an issue with people parking in hourly, in our hourly garages, for example, although their stay was really a long-term stay. And so one of the objectives of this parking rate increase, besides increasing revenue, was to try and discourage or incentivize passengers who are parking long-term to use long-term products, thereby freeing up our hourly products for people who are coming in on short trips. Without that, we would have people driving around in our hourly parking facilities and not being able to find a space because the passy wouldn't be there. And they would find themselves on our roadway system, which would create congestion on our roadway system. So because of this, this rate increase, besides a revenue increase, you'll see that the green arrows, that our capacity is good, overcrowding is down, vehicles circling in the garages and the lots, that's down. And congestion on the roadways down, and our shuttle delays because of congestion on the roadway is also down. And so by any measure, the parking rate increase meet the object, met the objectives that we intended to be met. Looking ahead, the next quarter, we will be just as ambitious. It will be a very technology-laden update. We're looking at expanding our ticklish entry and exit capability at the airport, introducing or expanding online reservations for parking, updating our credit card processing capability in our parking facilities, implementing digital payment options, credit card tap-to-pay, and others. And so we're looking forward to giving you more updates on these projects that will enhance our parking products in the coming months. With that, that, that completes my shortened and expedited presentation. I will now make myself available for questions. And before you ask questions, I will bring to your attention that I do have members of the executive management team here from the Department of Aviation. And so any tough question you ask me, they will handle the tough questions, and then I will handle the softball questions.
Thanks, sir. We do have a couple of people ready to ask questions, Councilmember Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good to see you, Ms. Smith. I appreciate you and the team and all that y'all do. And I just came back from National League of Cities out in Salt Lake City in Utah. And I think the work that y'all do every day is well-received by our friends at municipalities across the country. And so thank y'all for, for making me and Councilmember Amos and others that joined us at NLC this week, the stars of the show, because Atlanta's airport is, is well-regarded and well-known, and it's because of the work y'all put in every single day. One thing, my only real question that I have for y'all is, because I just came from National League of Cities, and I, I do travel regularly with my family and because of some leadership programs I'm involved with, experiencing other airports across the country, I recognize that a lot of their public art investment is outside the airport, kind of welcoming you to the city or welcoming you to the airport if you're coming in from a regional location and coming, visiting that municipal infrastructure in that sort of way. And I was curious, and this may be more of a question for OCA, but is, are we looking at public art investments outside of the terminal space or outside of the concourses? I know we have been doing a great job of making the walkways very welcoming, and you know, you learn a lot walking from the T-gates to the E-gates. But I wonder if there's an opportunity for a monument or gateway feature that can really welcome people to Atlanta in the same way that I've seen in some of the other airports that I've visited?
So thanks for the question, Councilman. The answer is yes. I'm glad you appreciate the amazing work that goes inside the terminal, where every capital project we do has a significant art element to it. And we're all looking at opportunities to expand that on the exterior. You know, ATL is famous for its exterior art as well. If you look at the canopy, for example, many people look at the canopy and they see that as a very creative, innovative way to introduce some artistic expression to the face of the airport. And so we're looking for other opportunities to do that well, not just on the concourse, but in the atrium and other parts exterior to the terminal.
And I almost mentioned that the canopy, I think, is remarkable, and I love seeing it lit up and seeing how it's aligned with how we have City Hall lit up sometimes as well. Say, what's going on right now? But I've always appreciated that. One additional thought, as well as with especially the new parking facilities that we're going to be wrapping up with next year, I know that cake is already baked in terms of the scope of the project and so forth and so on, but if there's even a possibility to do a, a public art sort of feature either on or as part of that, as an example, I know even if you go like mid- As an example, I know even if you go like Midtown, for instance, you see a lot of these parking structures that have murals and things like that to liven it up. So it's not, you're not just staring at a big wall of concrete. At the Portland Airport, at PDX, they have ivy or it's a lot of greenery. And so even though you have this parking structure, you still feel like you're in nature and it's very relaxing and you know. So it's just more we can think about leveraging the facilities, assets that we have and make that as part of the art strategy, I think, would make the airport experience even better than it already is.
We appreciate that, Councilman. And the opportunity isn't lost with the completion of the capital project. We can still implement art into our facilities as part of the operating program as well. So we'll look into that.
All right, thank you so much. Vice Chair, you.
Thank you, our next speaker, Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Really good working with you since you've been here. Excited to see some of the other things you're going to do. The conversation I was going to have is around the focus on people. I'm excited about this. The facility, the maintenance program, the apprenticeship program that you all put together. And but you only did two people this year. And so what was that timeframe?
So that program, the initial program was a pilot. And we're actually glad it was a pilot because as we went through that program, we learned that there were opportunities to improve the program. And so when we do our next iteration, it will be a much improved program as we bring one another trades. And so actually, there were four people in the program. The second two will graduate next year.
Okay, and you all do this on-site?
Yes, it's on-site.
I know a lot of our departments, what we've done is do a partnership with, in my district, with Atlanta Area Technical College. And we do know they have all that stuff there already. So I would love to make a connection with you and Dr. Seals over at Atlanta Technical College.
Yeah, this is a partnership with the Atlanta Technical College.
This is a partnership, so they come there?
Yes, they do. So we, so we do some on-the-job training work on-site, but they also do classroom training as well.
How can we increase the number?
Well, now that the pilot is complete and we've worked out some of the kinks, then we think we can host more. And so we will be looking to host more.
I'm excited about that. That's a way we can grow from within. Of the, of the focus on people as well, on the new hires, of the one hundred and seventy-eight positions that are still vacant, how many are entry-level?
Councilman, I have to get back to you on with that, with that answer?
Reason being, I know we have had a few job fairs this year. A lot of people filled out applications for those entry-level positions. I would like to fill those and that way we can get some more people in the process so they can get into that apprentice program and become, and get some of this good living that comes from working for this good city at our airport.
So, so part of our strategy with maintenance, and this is true with some of the other functional areas as well, is because we have talent in the organization, we're looking to position that talent to take advantage of promotional opportunities. And so as they move up, that creates lower-level positions, including some entry-level positions for new recruitments. And so you'll be, you'll see some more aggressive effort to recruit entry-level positions down the road.
And real quick question, is customer experience, is this mainly the buttons in the restroom?
No, I'm sorry, can you?
I was wondering where, where do you capture your data?
Okay, thank you. So the ACI or Airport Council International Program, they have what they call passenger interceptors. These are individuals who are spread throughout the central terminal complex and they're interviewing passengers. So these are not, the buttons you see at the restrooms, that's a completely different source. The information I'm reporting on comes from the interviews that the interceptors get.
Okay, the, thank you. The aviation administration building, will this replace where you currently meet?
To some degree.
Your current office is.
To some degree, right now, a lot of our administrative staff is on the fourth floor of the atrium. But we have administrative team members throughout the campus. And so we will consolidate a lot of that into the administration building. We will still have some in the terminal. For example, our badging function, which is largely an administrative function, will still be in the terminal. We'll still have some of our concessions employees in the terminal because they have to be face-to-face with the concessionaires. And so we'll move some into the building, a lot of them in the building, but we'll still have a presence in the terminal.
What about your office?
My office will be in the new building. But I will also have a cubicle space inside the terminal because I'll still be spending time in the terminal.
Okay, the pie in the sky, rental car center growth is down. Is there a particular reason about that season or is it just a season? You sound like the growth.
You know, I asked, I asked that question right before this meeting started. You know, it's hard to understand sometimes why rental car transactions are up or down. This is not due to a shortage of vehicles, which has been the case in the past. We don't have the answer to that. And so we're going to do a deeper dive and maybe I can give you a better answer next time.
I'm only saying, I used to travel two hundred days a year. So every time I travel, I used to have to rent a car and so that brings me to the other portion. Sometimes when I used to go to Atlanta's Hartsfield-Jackson Airport, on some of my trips, I would park closer. And I was, it's a short trip, I would stay for one day. I'd be a little later to the airport, so it's a little difficult to park the further distance. This new daily max, because your explanation of why you all did is amazing. For those peoples, you were aiming at me. But are there new flyers, are there signs that tell people, hey, do not park here? This is the daily max and right over here is the hourly.
So our signage is not that specific. But the pricing itself discourages people from, you know, intelligence shoppers, which is pretty much all of our shoppers. They look at the price tag of parking and if they see a more expensive option, they'll look for a discount. And so if you're going to park multiple days, passengers who are used to riding, coming to the airport know that long-term parking will offer a better rate, a better experience for long-term trips.
I think they'd be surprised, if we can, look at some of the signage. I think, because I just remember, once again, I traveled two hundred days a year for six years. And some of those days, I would park at the hourly parking deck. Now that I know the difference, I never even knew some of the penalties and why you did it until you just explained it. But some folks, they are going to do that. And whenever they get back to Hartsfield-Jackson Airport, they're going to get a price tag of seventy-five dollars a day. And they're not going to understand that.
We can do that. And Councilman, we may even buttress that with some kind of a campaign to educate the flying public on how to park smartly.
Thank you. And I think my last question, that was it. Dogs for the parking lot. I'm always looking for my dogs for the parking lot. We, I'm so excited about it. This morning, I had a call this morning at eight AM about Roselle Fan and Pittman Park and about the new rooms we put in. And we are purchasing a dog so our kids can learn how to use it the right way. And so if we're able to purchase it through a nonprofit, a local nonprofit, just would like for you all to continue looking at throwing spaghetti on the wall to make people feel safer. Because folks felt so safe that they asked this nonprofit to purchase one so the young kids could learn how to use it at our recreation center. So you can look into that security measure that they're using all over the world at the Atlanta Airport as well. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, your next speaker, Councilmember Ellis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, GM Smith. Thanks for the presentation. With the holidays upon us, I'm, I guess thankfully, not traveling by plane this year. But as you know, many people do. I think Thanksgiving is the busiest travel time of the year. Historically, there have been issues with a lack of officers curbside and doing traffic control at the airport during these peak seasons. And I believe last year, of course, before your time here, we, there was a decision was made to upgrade that. And I think they staffed an additional ten, twelve officers at both the domestic and the international terminal. Is the plan to keep that level of service this year as well? Or are there cutbacks?
So every year, we, we kind of look back on the previous year to see what we could do better. And when we find a fix, we continue that fix. We'll certainly continue to fix for this year in terms of staffing with our ATL enforcement and other offices at the airport. That being said, the Thanksgiving period is the Thanksgiving period. And there's going to be some backup, there's going to be some inconvenience. But we will have the highest complement of ATL enforcement and other security presence out here to make sure that we're processing traffic as quickly as we can.
And I'm speaking specifically about sworn officers. Is, is that level of service going to be maintained as sure as it was in the previous year?
Yes, it will.
Okay, all right. Thank you, sir.
Vice Chair Overstreet.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, for your presentation today. I don't know, I thought it was a little short. I mean, I had like twenty less beautiful pages to look at. But, you know, and I really keep, I keep them all. I really like them, so I thought it was short.
I'll take that.
But it was good information. So that's important. But I'm sure there's some other pages that we could have gotten to today. Anyway, I, like always, I want to talk about our customer experience. I see that we ticked up a little bit, like a quarter of a percentage, right?
That's correct.
So we're headed towards that four that I want to get to across the board. I see that leisure travelers are at four, which, you know, I'm happy to see. I think that, like we talked about last time, the more we complete our construction projects, the higher these numbers are going to go. And the more we make sure that our concessionaires are open and we have the variety there. And now you're talking today about innovation, you know, the technology add. I think all of that's going to matter. There are a few things that I do want us to continue to do to advance our customer experience. And that is continue to look at innovative ways to get from the international concourse back to the domestic concourse, our parking. It's, it's a challenge, you know, because they really are not close to one another. But I do know that because we are landlocked over, over there, that we can figure out something that's inside of our, our areas to work with instead of our shuttles having to stop at all of the lights and no dedicated lanes. I just think that there's an opportunity there. And I just, you know, I have zero complaints today, to be honest. But always want to talk about the customer experience because I love a good airport. It's, it's one of the things that have made me happy for my entire adult life. And I want to make sure that ours stays top of mind for everyone. And experience does matter. So we're going to, I'm looking forward to moving from our overall satisfaction at three point nine six. We're so close, we are so close, to just, you know, making it a full-blown four-point something or another. And one day we'll be at five, but right now, I'm just looking for the fours. I'm just looking for the fours. And I wanted to at least, you know, thank you for just digging in and making sure that you're touching all of the areas that matter.
Well, thank you, Vice Chair. You know, it's interesting, the segment of our traveling public that is lagging is the business traveler. These are the, these are the travelers who are the savviest travelers, right? But their, our scores are lagging with them. The leisure travelers are the ones who are giving us the highest score. And they're normally the ones who are less efficient, more anxious, more confused when they're traveling the airport. And so we know where we have to target our efforts and so we're going to be working on that. So that's, that's one. We are also embarking on a master plan update, which is a relook of the entire airport campus. And that's the opportunity to look at how we can solve the problem you just suggested. That is a suggestion that comes from a lot of audiences in terms of how do you get from the international terminal to the domestic terminal more easily? And so that's something we'll be looking at.
So maybe this year, well, at the top of next year, we can focus on our field trip that we usually have. I don't think we had one in 2025 to the airport. And we will in 2026 as a committee have a field trip. Maybe we can make it centered around customer experience and something along those lines of from international to domestic and just opportunities that we can shore up over the years. Does that sound like a planned transportation?
Will do.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wykoff.
All right, hello, Mr. Smith. Thank you so much for being here today to talk to us about the quarterly report. It's my first one that I got to experience. So customer experience, like the Vice Chair, is top of mind for me as someone that works in customer experience as well. Looking at the numbers, three point nine six, I do see, you know, the increase. And interested to know specifically what are our customers saying at the airport? And what are those targeted areas that you're working to improve on? And be interested to know more about that in the next one. Additionally, as a MARTA rider and transit-dependent person, I didn't hear anything about encouraging MARTA ridership or adoption of that. And so would like to hear in the future about numbers, I don't know if you have any numbers around that in coordination with MARTA, that would be helpful. And then in general, yeah, the long-term plans to moving people from domestic to international was also on my list. I did actually ride the shuttle a couple of months ago as a wheelchair rider, as a wheelchair user. That experience took about twice as long as someone who is able-bodied. And I think that's important to call out because while those little shuttles have accessibility, they've checked the box for ADA. But the problem is, is they take a long time to unload and load the lift. And then at the time that I did take it, one of the lifts, in order to get off of it, it broke. So I had to wait thirty minutes on the shuttle before someone could come and rescue me. So thinking long-term about how we create accessibility for low, low ride or the, like the MARTA buses that we have that are low-floor vehicles, those are a much better experience from an accessibility standpoint or trains or, you know, any type of other service that doesn't use those lifts. I would highly encourage as you're thinking in the master.
Thank you for the suggestion and the question, Councilwoman. So I'll take the first one last and the last one first. So we just met with a nonprofit organization a couple of weeks ago that is going to be working with us to advise us on how we can improve, improve accessibility, not just on the roadway, but throughout the terminal.
Who is that?
I'll get the name to you, the organization, but we're excited about that group. It's actually a group out of, somewhere out of, out of Georgia. But I'll share that group with you as well. And so we're excited about that. In terms of complaints, I mean, when you're moving, you know, a hundred and eight million passengers a year, you're always going to run into congestion. We have a very old facility. And so people generally complain about lines, security checkpoint lines, which we've made enormous progress with the lines. That's part of the reason why you see the scores improving, the size of restrooms, the hold rooms are too small, lines at the concessions locations. And so because of the volume of traffic, people generally complain about lines. They complain about the cleanliness of the restroom. But when you have, you know, a few thousand people using the restroom at the same time, then it's a challenge keeping the restrooms as clean as people might expect. But we're working closely with the AATC to try to improve that. But generally, the complaints are around congestion associated with volume.
Councilmember One.
Thank you. I'll make mine quick. Thank you, GM Smith. Just wanted to, as we're talking about accessibility, you probably are aware that Councilmember Overstreet and I sit on the Atlanta Region Transit Link Board. And there are some exciting initiatives and conversations around MARTA connect and rapid transit connecting into airport as well as other potential options. So I hope that, I'm encouraging you and your team, I know there are conversations going on, to be supportive or be as ambitious as you can with that for both, for two reasons. One is create accessibility for passengers to be able to get to the airport. But then also workforce as well. I see your vacancy numbers and I see they're improving. But that's another way to be able to help with that. Is if more people can get to the employment center, you'll have a bigger pool. So I just encourage you to lean into that as best as you and your team can.
There are a couple of PRT options that we're looking at as a part of feasibility study. And at a future quarterly meeting, hopefully, I can give you an update on that.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions myself. Cargo, you mentioned it was down, but I did not hear why.
So Southwest Airlines is retrenching, is pulling back. And so just their activity alone is down around twenty-three percent. So that's the, that's the major driver in our cargo program being down, our freight program being down.
So they're pulling back but not pulling out?
They're not pulling out.
We can get a space somebody else.
Yeah, they're pulling, they're pulling back at other places as well, but certainly in Atlanta. And that's been the case for about a year now.
Got you. I like when departments come and give their presentations because we can clear up some stuff that happened. Couple of months ago, a news agency did a big story about the federal money we was losing and things of that nature. I know we talked about this at the beginning. I know we talked about this at the beginning of the year. Can you tell us how, um, you was prepared for it and how safety nor service was compromised in the losing of these dollars?
So, um, Department of Aviation has about an eleven billion dollar capital program, um, over the next several years. And that program is resourced by a number of options, uh, sources, including federal funds, which is a small aspect of our overall capital program, um, funding source. And so, um, so we're able to, um, to look at the, um, the priority projects that we have coming down the pike that might be affected by federal funds and develop strategies for continuing those projects. Perhaps in some, to some degree, um, deferring them a little bit because they're not as priority as they, um, they're not as high priority, but in other cases, shuffling projects around so that we can continue to fund projects that were supported by the money that was lost. And so we still feel comfortable that we can fund our capital program, um, and, um, we're, we're prepared for that loss.
Thank you. Um, also want to say thank you to you and your team, also our business partners, and even private citizens that stepped up during this time of the shutdown to make sure our TSA officer stayed at work and on duty to make sure we were safe and secure. And just because I know it's a conversation that takes place every, every time we talk, um, with the new office building coming online, will be given badging, a bigger area to work with so we can get more people badged and more efficiently pushed through the system.
Excellent question, sir. That is part of the reason why we need the new office building so that we can free up space, some space in the terminal so we can expand our badging office. But giving, uh, but, but increasing the footprint is not the only thing that they're doing. They're looking at new ways of processing passengers. They're looking at, um, extending the hours, weekend hours, um, developing an appointment system, for example. So there are a host of ways that we're looking to process more people other than just increasing the geography.
All right, and then last one is just a preemptive strike. In this, um, new master plan, we start talking about the system already. You don't have to answer that, we just put that out there.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, but that is it, sir. Um, but thank you. If there's any more questions? Saying, uh, thank you, happy holidays.
Thank you for the opportunity. All right.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, I think that takes us to our regular agenda. Proceed, please.
Section eight, ordinance for second reading, item number two, twenty-five oh one six five zero. An ordinance by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation to execute the Fourth Amendment to agreement listed herein, twenty twenty-one, Lamig Street Resurfacing Project Group Two, Southwood Magnum Pavilion LLC, to extend the terms of the contract for an additional one hundred twenty days, establishing a new completion date of March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-six, to add the Atlanta Urban Redevelopment Agency Funding Account string to authorize the use of funds in an amount not to exceed two million, four hundred fifty thousand, two hundred ninety-five dollars and ninety-four cents to meet the local match requirements waived Chapter Two, Article Ten, Division Four, Section two dash eleven eighty-seven of the Bicameral Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta Municipal Code of ordinances. All contract work will be charged to and paid from the accounts listed herein and for other purposes.
Motion to approve. Motion has been made in second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? One moment. Close the vote. It'll, it'll show away.
The vote is closed. Five yas, zero nays. This item is favorable. Mr. Chair, item number three requires a substitute, the substitute changes the caption. Now, we have a motion to bring forth a substitute?
Second. Motion has been made in second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
The vote is closed. Five yas, zero nays. The substitute before you. The substitute adds the funding amount for the monthly management fee and reimbursable operating budget, incorporate the account information, and make revisions throughout the legislation. Item number three, twenty-five oh one six five six. An ordinance by Councilmember Michael Julian Bond is substituted by Transportation Committee by even the competitive procurement source selection provisions contained in Division Four, Article Ten, Bicameral Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordnances, as well as any other conflicting code provisions, including but not limited to Section two dash twelve ninety-two E to authorize the mayor or his designated to execute an additional amendment for contract listed herein, car website management services at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport with MTI Limo and Shuttle Services Incorporated doing business as front row parking on behalf of Department of Aviation to ratify services rendered and extend the term of the contract on a month-to-month basis for a period up to nine months retroactively effective from November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five and to expire on or before August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-six and to add funding in an amount not to exceed four million, eight hundred seventy-five thousand dollars and zero cents. All contract work will be charged to and paid from the account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
Motion to approve. Motion has been made in second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
The vote is closed. Five yas, zero nays. This item is favorable on substitute. Item number four, twenty-five oh one six six six. An ordinance by Councilmembers Marcy Cario Overstreet and Esha Collins authorizing the City of Atlanta to waive the competitive procurement source election provisions contained in Section two dash eleven eighty-seven of Article Ten, Bicameral Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordnances, as well as any other conflicting code provisions, including but not limited to Section two dash twelve ninety-two E to authorize the mayor or his designated to execute an amendment to agreement listed herein, identity management system, Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport with Dean and One LLC on behalf of the Department of Aviation to add services and funding in an amount not to exceed five hundred thirty thousand, nine hundred ninety-one dollars and zero cents. All services will be charged to and paid from the account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
Motion has been made in second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
The vote is closed. Five yas, zero nays. This item is favorable. This takes us to, uh, Section I resolutions. Mr. Chair, item number five requires a substitute, the substitute changes the caption. Now, we have a motion to bring forth a substitute?
Second. Motion has been made in second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
The vote is closed. Five yas, zero nays. The substitute is brought before you. The substitute makes revisions in the captioning and throughout the legislation. Item number five, twenty-five R four two one nine, a resolution by Councilmember Michael Julian Bond is substituted by Transportation Committee requesting that the Atlanta Department of Transportation designate a portion on, of orange street parking spaces on Lakewood Avenue Southeast for residential use only and implement signage and enforcement mechanisms and for other purposes.
Second. Motion has been made in second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote?
The vote is closed. Six yas, zero nays. This item is favorable on substitute. Mr. Chair, item number six requires a substitute, the substitute changes the caption. May we have a motion to bring forth a substitute?
Motion to bring forth a substitute. Is there a second? Motion has been made in second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
The vote is closed. Seven yas, zero nays. The substitute is brought before you. The substitute clarifies the locations where honorary towers will be installed and make revisions throughout the legislation. Item number six, twenty-five R four two two two. A resolution by Councilmembers Andre L. Boom, Michael Julian Bond, Marcy Cario Overstreet, and Esha Collins is substituted by Transportation Committee to designate Burnt Hickory Drive Southwest between Spreading Oak Drive Southwest and Hazelwood Drive Southwest as honorary John T. Johnson Way to authorize the City of Atlanta Department of Transportation to install honorary signs where Burnt Hickory Drive Southwest street signage is installed and for other purposes.
Motion to approve. Is there a second? Motion has been made in second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
The vote is closed. Seven yas, zero nays. This item is favorable on substitute. Mr. Chair, item number seven, uh, will need to bring forth a substitute, the substitute changes the caption. Now, we have a motion to bring forth a substitute? It's been distributed via email.
Motion to bring forward the substitute?
Is it only in?
Motion has been made in second. Um, have a discussion. Have a question.
Is it only in our email?
Yes, yes, Councilmember.
Okay, can you print those? Maybe we can move on and, um, you pass it out. I don't have that device with me right now.
So we're in the middle of a motion. Do we need to withdraw the motion or, 'cause we just came? Postpone?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so.
Request to postpone.
No objection. Okay. We're taking it at the end of the regular agenda. Okay. All right, with that being said, as staff prints that, Mr. Johnson, are you prepared to move forward, number eight?
Mr. Chair, item number eight requires a substitute, the substitute changes the caption. Now, we have a motion to bring forth a substitute?
Second. Motion has been made in second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
The vote is closed. Seven yas, zero nays. The substitute is brought before you. The substitute makes revisions throughout the legislation. Item number eight, twenty-five R four two two six. A resolution by Councilmember Jason Dozier is substituted by Transportation Committee requesting the mayor or his designated to install traffic coming devices on Lorenzo Drive Southwest between Avon Avenue Southwest and Camelton Road Southwest and for other purposes.
Move approval. Second. Motion has been made in second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
The vote is closed. Seven yas, zero nays. This item is favorable on substitute. Item number nine, twenty-five R four two two eight. A resolution by Councilmembers Marcy Cario Overstreet and Esha Collins authorizing the mayor or his designated to exercise the renewal option of for contract number listed herein, noise insulation program design services at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport with Chazin Architectural LLC on behalf of the Department of Aviation for a term of two years effective January third, twenty twenty-six, through January second, twenty twenty-eight, on a task order basis and for other purposes.
Motion. Second. Motion has been made in second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Yes. The vote is closed. Seven yas, zero nays. This item is favorable. Item number ten, twenty-five R four two two nine. A resolution by Councilmember Marcy Cario Overstreet authorizing the mayor or his designated to execute corrupt agreement number listed herein, Webex Calling Platform Support and Maintenance at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport with CDW Government LLC utilizing state of Georgia contract number listed herein, pursuant to City Code Section two dash sixteen zero six of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordnances on behalf of the Department of Aviation for a term of one year with two one-year renewal term options in an amount not to exceed four hundred fifty thousand dollars and zero cents. All contract work will be charged to and paid from the account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
Motion has been made in second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Vote is closed. Seven yas, zero nays. This item is favorable. Mr. Chair, item number eleven requires a substitute, the substitute changes the caption. Now, we have a motion to bring forth a substitute?
Motion has been made in second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote?
The vote is closed. Seven yas, zero nays. The substitute is brought before you. The substitute incorporates language reference, referencing the Moving in Atlanta Forward Initiative Comprehensive Transportation Plan and the Buckhead LCID Study. In the preamble clauses, makes additional revisions throughout the legislation and attaches Exhibit A, which is the project management agreement. Item number eleven, twenty-five R four two three one. A resolution by Councilmember Howard Shook is substituted by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated to execute a project management agreement with the Buckhead Community Improvement District for the Lennox Road Safe Street and multiple multipurpose path project improvements from Fifth Boulevard Northeast to State Route one forty-one on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation, amount not to exceed six million dollars and zero cents. All contract work will be charged to and paid from the Fund Department Organization and account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
Motion has been made in second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
The vote is closed. Seven yas, zero nays. This item is favorable on substitute. Mr. Chair, item number twelve, uh, will need to bring forth a substitute. The substitute changes the caption, but we have a motion to bring forth a substitute?
Open the vote.
The vote is open.
The vote is closed. Seven yas, zero nays. The substitute is brought before you. Item number twelve, twenty-five R four two three two. A resolution by Councilmember Alex Wong is substituted by Transportation Committee requesting that the Atlanta Department of Transportation remove certain designated taxi parking spaces in the Virginia Highland neighborhood and return said spaces to the general public, street parking, and for other purposes.
Motion has been made in second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Seven must warn me to postpone.
Will everyone please vote?
The vote is closed. Seven yas, zero nays. This item is favorable on substitute. This takes us to item number thirteen. Mr. Chair, we need to bring more, bring, a motion to bring forth a substitute. The substitute changes the caption.
Second. Motion has been made in second.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote?
The vote is closed. Seven yas, zero nays. The substitute is brought before you. The substitute references Section twenty-five B one of the Metropolitan Atlanta Rapid Transit Act of nineteen sixty-five in the caption, and makes minor revisions throughout the legislation. Item number thirteen, twenty-five R four two three three. A resolution by Councilmembers Matt Westmoreland, Cardine Wykoff, Jason Dozier, Byron D. Amis, Alex Wong, and Antonio Lewis is substituted by Transportation Committee requesting the Georgia General Assembly to amend Section twenty-five B one of the Metropolitan Atlanta Rapid Transit Act of nineteen sixty-five to extend the sales and use tax for transport purposes currently set to expire on June thirty of twenty fifty-seven for an additional ten years and for other purposes.
Second. Motion has been made in second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
The vote is closed. Seven yas, zero nays. This item is favorable on substitute. Item number fourteen, twenty-five R four two seven eight. A resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated to execute a right-of-way mowing and maintenance agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation for mowing and maintenance services, permanent ID number listed herein at State Route one thirty-nine near East Ontario Avenue Southwest, as shown in Exhibit A, attached here too and for other purposes.
Second. Motion has been made in second. Please open the vote. Second, motion has been made a second, please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays, this item is favorable. This takes us to item number fifteen. Twenty-five R four two seven nine. A resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated exercise renewal number two for contract number listed herein, asset management consulting and professional services with Jacobs Engineering Group at Hartsfield Jackson Atlanta International Airport for a term of one year effective February third, twenty twenty-six through February second, twenty twenty-seven and amount not to exceed one million, six hundred five thousand dollars and zero cents to provide asset management professional services for the Department of Aviation for a renewal term of one year, all contract award will be charged to and paid from the account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
Second, motion has been made a second, please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays, this item is favorable. This takes us to item number sixteen. Twenty-five R four two eight zero. A resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated or the chief procurement officer to exercise the final renewal option for agreement listed herein. Intersection Improvement Project on Moore's Mill Road at two locations with BRTU Construction Incorporated on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation for a term of one year effective March twenty-second, twenty twenty-six through March twenty-first, twenty twenty-seven with no additional funding required and for other purposes.
Motion still approved. Motion has been made a second, please open the vote.
The vote is open. Vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays, this item is favorable. Item number seventeen, twenty-five R four two eight one. A resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated execute a right away mowing and maintenance agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation for mowing and maintenance services permanent ID listed here in at John Lewis Freedom Parkway and Ralph Miguel Boulevard. Uh, permanent ID listed here in at Northside Drive in Spelman Lane. Permanent ID listed here in at Ralph David Abernathy and Pollard Boulevard. Permanent ID listed here in. And at Windsor Avenue at I twenty crossing shown in Exhibit A, attached here too and for other purposes.
Motion has been made a second, please open the vote.
The vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays, this item is favorable. Item number eighteen, twenty-five R four two eight two. A resolution by Transportation Committee to amend Resolution twenty-five R four zero eight five adopted by the Atlanta City Council on November third, twenty twenty-five and approved per City Charter Section two dash four zero three on November twelfth, twenty twenty-five to correct the awardee name from Fort Brand to Sherwin Industries Incorporated, the Cooperative Agreement Number from CPA MDOA two five one zero, one two six zero zero five eight to CPA MDOA two five one zero, one two six zero 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 five seven, the source work contract number from one 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 five two to F T B to one one zero one two two S W N and not the, and the not exceed amount from one million five hundred, two thousand nine hundred twenty-four dollars and zero cents to ten million dollars from ten million dollars and zero cents and for other purposes.
So um, it's listeners, Mr. Rucker, to speak to this, or someone from aviation can speak to this paper?
Good afternoon. Christopher Jackman, H E M Operations and Maintenance. And what this is, is just a change in the names, we were working two contracts under the Sourcewell, the Sourcewell Cooperative Agreement. One with Fort Brand, one with Sherwin Industries for winter weather. Fort Brand takes care of leasing pieces of equipment to help us with our winter weather. And Sherwin Industries is providing a maintenance service to allow us, to assist us with clearing um, snow and ice in the event of weather, so we're not raising the contract, we have these two contracts, one is not to exceed ten million, one is not to exceed one point five million. But the names got crossed and we realized that when we went to um, submit for the P O for these contracts.
Councilmember Wong.
Thank you, so I, there's two things I want to get a better understanding of, let's, let's do the basics first, so what you're telling me is that this original uh, a resolution, forty, twenty-five R forty eighty-five was for Fort Brand for one point five million. But we made a mistake in that it should have been with this company for this bigger amount.
That's correct, so it was with Fort Brand, but it should have been with Sher, um, Sherwin Industries for the ten million dollars.
Do we have another contract or a piece of legislation that has Fort Brand with one point five million somewhere?
Yes, we do.
Someone have that reg, uh, resolution number?
Councilmember Wong is twenty-five R forty eighty-four.
Forty eighty-four, okay. Okay, and then the reason the reason for the amount is, we, y'all had always intended for there to be two contracts. One for one point five and one for ten. We just needed to fix that second to reflect what we actually needed.
Yeah, we're just changing the names.
Alright, so the mechanics to me makes sense, that, that's helpful. I don't understand what um, the interim inspector general was talking about in terms of the I Pro report at the beginning. Um, I was told in the hallway though, that corporate purchasing agreements, which I believe this is don't need I Pro reports, so I need some clarification on that um, to understand what that was all about at the beginning. And I see a bunch of people hovering behind you. So I just need one of them come, yeah, whichever one y'all play tag on.
Good afternoon, Amber A. Robinson, City of Atlanta Department of Law, I can answer that affirmatively. Cooperative purchases do need I Pro reports, that was a recent um amendment to the charter um, the last year or so to clarify that. Um, but in this particular piece of legislation, we've been doing some examination right before this meeting and we believe that there is an appropriate substitute to be done um, to clarify some aspects of what this legislation is asking to be done. Um, and we believe it could move forward on the recommendation, but that it will need a substitute um, prior to adoption.
So regarding the I Pro requirement though, are you saying that that substitute would negate the need for one or?
No, I, I, it was my understanding and I of course would defer to the Office of Inspector General that the I Pro report and this particular piece of legislation was completed, is that not?
Again, it was confusing to, this morning.
Okay. I, I, I received a notice that it was, of course, we would confirm, but I, I believe it had been.
And has that been, yeah, has that been distributed to us?
I was informed that it was distributed to staff.
Okay, that's not helpful for us.
Okay, I, I'm sorry.
Randy Stanley, Department of Procurement Director of Implementation. Um, when the procurement came over, we did trigger I Pro. However, when aviation did the walk-in legislation, the timing got off. So we have obtained the draft report and we're finalizing those responses.
The walk-in legislation?
Yeah, a couple of cycles back, these two papers we're referring to were brought in as walk-ins.
So twenty-five R forty eighty-four was a walk-in?
Wait a minute, I don't do walk-ins.
Or personal, personal paper, I'm sorry.
Okay.
It didn't go through the normal process in which D O P has opportunity to review the draft legislation.
Okay. Alright, so what I'm hearing is that there will be a substitute for this Monday that clears up some of the language, at that point, the I Pro will marry up with the legislation, so that substitute should include the I Pro report? Is that correct?
The, the I Pro report should be provided to the council um, regardless of the substitute, that's a separate requirement, so it should be provided, I've just confirmed from the O I G that was in fact completed um, after the previous legislation um, had been adopted, so it should be I think to Department of Procurement's point, be on its way. But the substitute is to actually change some of the language to be clearer as to the intention of this um, resolution.
Alright, um, thank you, that, the explanations on both of those were helpful, Mr. Chair, you know, I don't normally like to send things without the I Pro, but given that December first is our last business meeting of the year, I'm going to make a motion to move this forward with no recommendation on condition of that substitute as well as, well, the substitute on Monday, but the receipt of the I Pro, if it's ready, I, I want y'all to send it now, please, um, uh, but we need to have it before Monday, so I'll make that motion.
Motion has been made a second, but we still have discussion, Councilwoman Overstreet.
Well, um, Councilmember Wong did ask a couple of questions that I had. I also still want to know though, um why so many issues, like it, on this particular legislation, it was um, you know, the, the first one needed to be corrected and then the second one needed to be corrected because of the first one. Um, why, why so many issues, why so many corrections needed here? And I'm not so sure that, um but first of all, it, it's a problem that we didn't get the I Pro and it was only given to um, those that don't make these decisions that we have to make as council. So um, I see we're correcting that, but I just I am going to abstain because I have unreadiness. I, I don't like um, the one point five, but it really should be ten million. Um, that's a big difference, so I'm gonna have a few conversations before I vote on this. Um, and I also can you tell me why it's not in ordinance too? Maybe that'll help.
Well ma'am, it was um, because um, of the Sourcewell Cooperative. And um, that's already a contract is, is why
Yeah.
it wasn't the ordinance.
It's an amendment, but it's an amendment to something that needed to be corrected, so that's an issue. You know, it's, it's not like a solid amendment because it wasn't a solid piece, piece of legislation in the beginning. It's an amendment to a, to legislation that needed to be corrected.
Good afternoon, um, so part of what the substitute will do is clarify that this actually is the approval of the contract for this ice and bad weather um, services at the at the airport um, contract. Not necessarily with reference to a previous resolution and this being a correction, because as you know, um, Councilmember Overstreet, the, the discrepancy between what they're at, what is being asked for this council to approve and the previous legislation is substantial. So whilst the services and everything described would be the same is going to clean this up without those confusing references.
Yeah, so let's be clear, I, I definitely want to make sure these services are continued and um, I I support that aspect of it, it's um, the legislation's pathway that, that, that has given me angst. And I, I just don't like the, the sloppiness of it all. I really would like for, especially since um our O I G signed up for public comment to come in and speak about the fact that council hasn't seen an I, I Pro. Um, that's an issue. You know? That's an issue. And it's not something that um, I'm completely comfortable with at this time. I do want to make sure that, you know, we don't have these kind of issues going forward. So I'm gonna have those conversations too. Um, so for today, I'll probably abstain, just to give me more time to and, and I know we have a December first deadline, I I wish I felt the weight of that, I don't, because it is not my issue that this paper was so sloppy. Um, but I am going to reach out and have some conversations so that I'll be more ready on Monday or not. Thank you.
Thank you, and very quickly, I'm gonna follow suit, um, you know, absent of this paper just talking about the process, and I don't know if there's anybody in this room can, that can speak to the process because there's no checking balances, I mean, we made a mistake but this paper still made it all the way to this committee with that mistake in it. Um, last week, it was, um, two weeks ago was another mistake, so who is checking the bids, who are checking the contracts? I don't know if that's procurement, risk management, contract compliance, I don't know who it is, but these types of things, in my opinion should not be making it all the way to us for us to be, um, have to do this work, so there's a motion on the floor that has been made and second, we pray it open, on, on condition. You want to restate your?
Sure, let's move forward with uh, no recommendation on two conditions, one is we receive the substitute that corrects the language on Monday and we get a copy of the completed I Pro report as soon as possible.
And also has been made a second, please open the vote.
Uh, Mr. Chair, can you repeat the mover in a second, sir?
Councilmember Wong, Councilmember Ellis.
The vote is closed, three A's, three abstention, this item is forwarded with no recommendation on condition. Mr. Chair, let's take us back to number, item number seven.
I'm fine with it.
May we have a motion to bring forth the substitute, the substitute changes the caption?
Second, motion has been made a second, please open the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please, the vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays, the substitute brought before you. Item number seven, twenty-five R four two two five. A resolution by Councilmembers Antonio Lewis, Andrea L. Boone, and Niche A. Collins as substituted by Transportation Committee. A resolution requesting the Commissioner of the Atlanta Department of Transportation to conduct a traffic study on Tab Street Southwest and Lincoln Street Southwest to determine the need for safety improvements such as traffic calming devices additional signage and other traffic calming measures and for other purposes.
Overprovo.
Motion has been made a second, please open the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? Vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays, this item is favorable on substitute. Mr. Chair, we have three items coming off hell.
Ashley colleagues, though, my three items, we'll start fresh in twenty twenty-six with those items, Mr. Johnson, leave them on hell.
Mr. Chair, I conclude our legislative items for today.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's signage. But I think that brings us to the end of the committee, we stand adjourned.
It was a lot.
Yeah, that was my personal favors.